Ladies and gentlemen, the cameras have been turned on. Tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting are about to ensue tonight. At the city council meeting, we kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Bruno here.
Berghardt?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Maladra? Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Never have wiser words been spoken at a council meeting. We begin our city council meeting, folks, with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Sergeant Gilberto Alba to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Sergeant. We have a celebratory evening ahead of us and it's truly exciting, not only to have our police officers with us, but of course, our friends from the ICEC and a number of students from Geneva High School who are visiting with us for the year from multiple different countries around the world. So if you have any questions during these proceedings, save it. Sound good? Carl, sound good? Item 3A, ladies and gentlemen, is to administer the oath and promotion ceremony for Police Sergeant Gilberto Alba. Sergeant, come up to the podium, sir. I was teasing you earlier that your family arrived at about 4:30.
No, that's not true.
And you brought a good group.
I did.
Would you like to introduce everyone?
Sure. Well, my parents are here.
Hi Mom and Dad.
My in-laws are here with my wife Evelyn, my son Levi, my daughter Louise.
My God.
And then my wife's grandma's also here, my brother Edgar, my brother Victor right there, sister-in-law Kyra. Yeah, it's a...
Yeah, that's the...
I forgot somebody.
We'd like to fill the space.
Clearly. Is the sergeant buying dinner after this? Yeah, no kidding.
I work tonight, so...
Are you working tonight?
I am.
Are you really? Well, we can drag this out if you'd like.
The chief's in the corner here.
Oh, is the chief here too? Shucks. Share with us how long you've been with us, Sergeant.
Going on six and a half years approximately.
And clearly, your family has nothing better to do than hang out with you here tonight. So where do you call home?
I live in Streamwood.
Nice. And I know you've done not only an excellent job, but by all accounts, you enjoy the heck out of your job.
I really do.
Why is... What inspires you as a cop?
I've just always wanted to, I guess, give back. I feel very lucky that I got some amazing parents, amazing family.
Oh, did you hear that, Mom and Dad? And what about the in-laws?
Yeah, of course. I was getting there.
Were you getting there?
Yeah, so then obviously now I have my, you know, my extended family, my wife, my in-laws. So again, just, I wanted to do something to give back, to pay it forward because they've, you know, made a lot of sacrifices to be here. So again, I just want to be a role model for my kids, for the youth, and really just be the best person that I can be.
Well, you obviously are. We're proud of you. When did you and I see each other last?
I'm sorry?
When did you and I see each other last?
Excluding tickets.
Excluding pulling me over.
Probably the Festival of the Vine?
It was festival. Wasn't that hotter than heck?
It was.
It was intense.
It was hot.
Because I remember you walking around saying, "I'm a sergeant, I don't need to do this." Is that what you said?
I don't know. Strong allegations.
Strong. It was hot that night, though.
It was.
It was toasty.
It cooled down.
Yeah, it did. It was beautiful. How old are the kids?
Levi's five, my daughter's 11 months.
Oh my gosh. Isn't that fun?
It is.
Wow. You made brief mention as to wanting to be a role model. You know, being a cop is difficult. Was there someone who inspired you in the police field?
In the police world? Well, I used to, I don't know if you guys know this, but my dad used to own goodies down the street off 38. That's now Dunkin' Donuts.
Don't say Dunkin' Donuts. Erase that, please. Your dad, your dad, really?
Yes.
Is that right, Dad? That's cool.
So that's where I used to, that's where I started working with my dad and that's where I met a lot of cops. One of them being Eddie Jackson, who's no longer with us, but...
Yeah, Eddie's a good man, West Aurora graduate, life is good.
Yeah, and then people from the sheriff's office, so I felt, and they were, you know, extremely welcoming. Then I met some more at ECC and so they always kept in contact with me, followed up with me.
That's cool.
Make sure I applied, you know, and so here I am.
Wow. Did your dad take care, take good care of you while employed under his tutelage?
Yeah, he did, actually.
And how did you meet Mrs. Alba?
We met at the gym.
At the gym, huh? She spotted you?
The other way around.
I don't mean visually, but I mean like on the weights.
I hope so, yeah.
And what, oh, I shouldn't even ask this question, but what the heck? What gym were you working out at?
LA Fitness in Hanover Park.
That's like, that's like highfalutin stuff, man.
I don't work out there anymore.
Well, you have two kids now, you're busier than heck.
Just switch gyms, that's all.
Yeah, just switch gyms. Wow. Are you ready to take the oath?
Sure. Yes.
I invite you to invite anyone you'd like to join you, to come up here. If you don't object, we're going to take some pictures.
Of course.
And we're going to post those in Batavia and St. Charles, so if you don't mind. Is that good?
Yeah, it sounds good. My wife and my parents.
Excellent. Actually, if you could leave the room, then... Yeah, whatever you'd like Sergeant, right up here. Then we'll have our city clerk who is administering the oath.
Just a minute.
Everyone get your cameras up.
Hi, Gilberto Alba. Having been promoted to the position of Police Sergeant
Having been promoted to the position of Police Sergeant
In the city of Geneva County of Kane, a horsehead Do solemnly swear That I will support the Constitution of the United States The Constitution of the State of Illinois The Geneva Code of Ordinances And that I will faithfully discharge the duties Of the position of Sergeant, Police Sergeant, according to the best of my ability. Best of my ability.
Don't worry, you mess up the day of our wedding, too.
Let's go back to the microphone. What happened the day of the wedding, Sergeants?
He said hi Evelyn.
Chief, this the best we can do?
He was going to make the best of his life, right?
Are you afraid to go home at night? I think twice Sergeant, if you're afraid to go home. Congratulations again Sergeant.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry Evelyn. Never going to let that one go. And thank you to the Alba family for joining us this evening. We are very proud of your husband, of your son, of your son-in-law, of your brother. So we're delighted that he's on our team. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this next presentation is a very powerful one. It's very poignant, it's very important. And I think it's very emotional as well. It's a presentation of life-saving medals to Police Sergeants Brad Jurdie, George Carbory, and Police Officers Bob Peck and Hunter Winterstein, Erica Bolger, Quantrill Priest, Megan Solner, and Matt Adam. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Passarelli to please join us at the podium.
Thank you Mayor.
Hi Chief.
Hi there. Well, thank you everyone for allowing me to be here tonight to brag about the work that these amazing officers are doing on behalf of the citizens of the city of Geneva. Every member of the Geneva Police Department has been called to this profession. This amazing, challenging, and rewarding profession is indeed a calling. When we ask our officers what, why they do what they do and what they hope to accomplish. They hope to make a difference, they hope to impact a life, they hope to make a difference in this community. Many times, it's very hard to pinpoint that we've made a difference. We hope, but in the cases I'm going to describe to you tonight, the difference that was made is concrete and obvious and impactful. Tonight, I'm going to describe the circumstances surrounding three different calls that have happened within the last year where the officers had an immediate impact on our community. Tonight, I'm going to be awarding life-saving medals to eight officers in this room. One of them will receive two for his efforts this year. So what I'm going to do is just describe these three cases to you and then I'll present the awards as we're going through them. So the first life-saving award is for Sergeant Brad Jurdie and Officer Bob Peck. Bob Peck's not able to join us tonight. But in this case, a neighboring police department was dispatched to check the welfare of a subject who was suicidal and was missing from a neighboring community. They checked all of the locations that had been given to them and they were unable to locate the victim in this case. Officer Bob Peck, who was serving as a detective at the time, had a connection with the family. They reached out to him to ask if there was anything that we could do because anyone who knows Detective Peck, Officer Peck, knows how thorough he is at what he does. He proceeded to start drawing maps and using different investigative techniques to try and figure out where this person may have been. Sergeant Brad Jurdie was working that night and they worked in conjunction to check areas within our community where this missing suicidal subject may have been. Sergeant Jurdie located the victim in a park here in Geneva. The car was locked, the victim was inside unconscious and unresponsive. Sergeant Jurdie forced entry into the car, removed the victim from the car into the parking lot, began providing first aid for the victim. At that point, the victim stopped breathing. He continued to provide CPR and further first aid until paramedics arrived to provide an advanced level of care. Due to the intervention of Bob Peck and Sergeant Brad Jurdie, this victim survived this ordeal and was able to be released from the hospital after receiving the care that they needed. So I'm absolutely convinced without their dedication, devotion, and their effort in trying to locate this victim and then rendering aid once they were found, they wouldn't be with us today. So Sergeant Brad Jurdie. This next incident involves Officer Hunter Winterstein and Officer Erica Bolger. In this case, they responded for a report of a subject who was unconscious, not breathing, who was possibly choking on their meal. Officers Winterstein and Bolger immediately responded to the scene, arriving on the scene in less than one minute from the time of the original dispatch. And as we all know, in these critical medical incidents, timing is everything. They immediately arrived, assessed the patient, determined that they were not breathing and that it was clear that they had an airway obstruction. They immediately began the Heimlich maneuver for an extended period of time until the paramedics arrived. During the case of rendering aid and care to the victim, it seemed as if they were having some progress in that the victim was able to gasp for air. Once the paramedics arrived, they were able to remove a large piece of steak from the victim's throat. The victim was transported to a hospital where they spent several days, but then were released and made a full recovery. This is again, another case where without the immediate response and intervention of our officers responding to that call, I'm absolutely convinced that that victim would not be here today. And to have him walk out of the hospital is a huge testament to Officers Bolger and Officers Winterstein. And then this last incident. This was one many of you are probably familiar with. When our officers responded to a report of a trespassing incident on the railroad trestle. As many of you know, that trestle is approximately 50 feet up in the air. Many of us do not like heights and not a place that I would want to be. So these officers responded up there. Upon their arrival, they located a younger male teen who was walking on the trestle, was threatening self-harm, and was refusing to come off of the railroad tracks. In this case, he was very non-communicative with the officers. At one point, he displayed two knives and threatened to harm himself. Throughout the encounter, he would lift his legs over the edge of the railing as if he was preparing to jump off of the bridge. This call was dangerous for so many different reasons. We all know the amount of train traffic that comes through here. It's dark, you have officers on that bridge trying to interact and de-escalate a situation that certainly had the potential to be extremely, extremely dangerous. Through our training, through the efforts of the officers, much of our department is crisis intervention trained. They worked with this subject for over an hour up on the railroad tracks, trying to convince them that this was not the right path and that they needed to come off the bridge so that we could give them the help that they needed. After an hour of finally having some good conversation where it seemed to resonate with him a little bit, he put his knives down and he walked to the edge of the railroad tracks and turned himself over to the officers, where he was then transported for additional care. He's also made a full recovery. And again, a dangerous situation that could have gone so many ways. A true credit to those officers that were on that bridge that night because it could have gone much worse. It could have ended in harm to them or the victim, let alone him actually jumping off of the bridge. So that didn't happen and thankfully due to their intervention, things are heading in a much better direction. So Sergeant Carbory's not here, but Officer Matt Adam, Officer Megan Solner, Officer Hunter Winterstein, and Officer Quantrill Priest.
Thank you, congratulations.
So in closing, as far as these awards go, I'm extremely proud of these officers and everything that they did throughout this year. Their efforts have allowed our residents, some of our residents, to have a second opportunity at life that would not have been possible without them. It's an extremely dedicated group of officers who care so much about this community, who put everything out there on a nightly basis. And I'm extremely proud of them and I hope that you guys are too.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Chief, would you mind terribly if I asked all the officers to come to the podium?
Absolutely, yeah.
Come on up here. I wanted to ask a question, I was hoping that whoever wishes to respond would do so. That's only five. Where'd the other three go? Jurdie left? Those sergeants. We know Peck and Carbory couldn't be with us, but I have a question for all of you. And feel free, if you choose not to answer, that's fine, but I think a lot of people might be curious as well. You had an extraordinary experience. You performed an extraordinary act. You saved a life. How do you, how did you come down from that experience? How did you recalibrate and recharge and ready to report back the next day for a shift? Feel free, anyone.
Mayor, I think with that, I mean, all of our situations were different.
Of course.
They were all high stress, high intensity. So we were all put in situations, but that were, you know, above what we normally respond to. But at the end of the day, I think all of us could agree that we were there to do our job and I think we all did our job to the best of our ability and we had the outcomes that we wanted, so...
Does it click in? Like they say, like you read, like you hear about, it just, it clicks in and you are ready to go?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you get put in that situation and like they always say, you could just go back to your training. The training that you've had, other experiences that you've had, just kind of clicks in. And, you know, I don't want to necessarily say you're on, you're not on autopilot mode, but
Right.
in the moment, you're kind of just doing what you, it just comes naturally, I guess, is the best I could say.
And after that moment, though, it's got to be this, whoa, whoa.
Oh yeah, I mean, at least in my situation, when we were on the bridge, it was like the chief described it. It was a very stressful situation, it could have gone poorly. But due to the intervention and I hope that's, the outcome that I wanted and that all of us up there wanted
Of course.
came to pass, so I think in that situation and everyone else's situations, we succeeded and we got the results we wanted.
How many years have you been a cop?
I've been on for just over a year and a half, sir.
Eighteen months?
Yes, sir.
As an officer?
Yes, sir.
The chief alluded to this. Are you afraid of heights?
I could say I am, yes sir.
Extraordinary. Anyone else wish to speak? You don't have to, but please, welcome, welcome.
Like Officer Adams said, you know, when you get dispatched to that call, you just kind of, you know, see what you have. One thing unfolds after another and, you know, I was involved in the train incident as well and you kind of get there and then you see somebody on there, "Okay, what do you have to do?" And it's just kind of step by step by step, you do what you have to do and you rely on your training. In terms of after the incident is over, we had a really nice moment. I believe it was myself, Sergeant Carbory, and Officer Adam, all like, we had a hug and like, "Good job", and then we had calls to go to, we were busy. So then, we kind of had that nice moment and then, you know, you just kind of keep moving on. I think it would have been a lot harder for us to deal with had it gone another way. But fortunately, that young gentleman is still with us here and, you know, we did our job and everybody went home safe that night and that's our goal, so...
And how long have you been an officer?
I've been on for three years.
When you were dispatched, how far did it take you to get to the scene?
I don't remember exactly, I believe it was under two minutes. It was pretty quick.
And my question, follow-up question is, what was going through your head? Like, okay, you've got dispatch, some details are shared. You know what you're about to face and you're flying to the scene, you're thinking, "What?"
Well, in this incident, we were dispatched to, I believe it was to check welfare. And we have, unfortunately, we have people that go on those train tracks quite frequently. So Officer Adam and I were the first ones on scene and we saw two teenage girls sitting, we went to the Third Street entrance or crossing for the tracks. There were two girls taking pictures just east of the tracks off of Third Street. And so our first initial thought was, "Oh, these are the people that are on the tracks." So we asked them to move or whatever and then we started walking down a little bit just to check and that's when we saw the young gentleman over the river on that little trestle bridge there, so... For that one, we did not know what we were walking into and as I said, you just, you see one thing and it kind of leads you step by step by step and then, you know, we're on the top of the bridge talking to them, so...
Are any of your family and friends with you tonight?
My family's here.
Good, 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 good. And they all, congratulations.
My mom, my dad, and my two brothers.
Nice. Who else would like to speak? And you don't have to if you don't want to, but...
Guess I'll go. I think really just speaking for the aftermath, we all check in with each other all the time. If we go to a call that, you know, kind of gives us that adrenaline dump or, you know, we see something that normally other people don't see, we all check in with each other, we're truly a family. So after each call, we'll, you know, "Are you all right? What's going on? Do you have to talk?" We'll check in on each other even weeks afterwards because it kind of takes time to settle in. So honestly, I think for, you know, after the fact, it's just the family aspect of it, as we truly all care about each other.
And how long have you been an officer?
Two and a half years.
You check in with each other. Everyone says, "I'm fine." Do you ever hesitate to say?
Oh, we know each other.
It convinces me you're fine.
We know each other, so if there's like an inflection of one of our voices or anything like that, we know each other very well. I mean, we're with each other more than we're actually at home. So, yeah, none of us have a problem being like, "No, you're not, let's talk about it." And majority of the time is we all feel comfortable enough to even say, you know, "No, I'm not okay."
And that's critically important.
Absolutely.
Critically important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Who else? Oh, look at Sergeant walk right in front of me.
Well, I was just going to cut off on kind of that tangent as far as, I think what you're alluding to is the mental health aspect and, you know, a lot of the young people, I think, understand that. It's focused on more in the academy of looking out for one another.
Now Sergeant, you're a veteran.
Fifteen years now.
I know, you and I were talking about it the other day at the mulch pile.
Seems like that, yes, a little bit, but...
Thanks for not helping me at the mulch pile, by the way.
But, you know, we've started now a peer support program. We're starting to build up our mental health resources through the department. But I'm really impressed with how the new generation of officers have done to reach out and connect with one another and not be ashamed to talk about it and reach out and have those connections. And, you know, we do check in much more often, I think, than in years past. You know, the old check-ins used to be a beer at the bar, you know, which they realize isn't the most healthy way to handle all these problems.
Sure.
Thank God for technology, text messaging, and group chats, and Snapchats, and things like that, that the rest of us can kind of stay connected and kind of speak out and vent to one another when we need to. Because I'm sure we all talked about our incidents many times over, you know, after they all happened and that helped immensely, just talking about what stress we went through at the time and then kind of decompress a little bit, so...
Now, knowing that there's a hierarchy in the police department, who, this by no means is a, well, actually it is. Who checks in with you? Do the officers feel comfortable enough, officers, to check in with the sergeant?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few people checking in on me periodically. Our command staff's really good about that, too. Deputy Chief Meduzia, who's hiding in the vestibule out there, has been a good friend of mine for many years. He was my first FTO and we kind of came through the department together.
Oh, good.
He's always good to send me a message, "You good?", and give me a pat on the back when I need it. So we're all at different levels looking out for one another, for sure.
Fantastic.
I'm going to look out for my level behind you.
Officer Priest?
Sure, I'll talk now today.
Now, before you start speaking, Officer, I want you to know that when I saw your dad earlier, he said to me, "I told you you have a good one." And I know that your family is extraordinarily proud of you.
Yeah, no lies were told there, so...
How are you doing?
I'm doing great, I can't complain, living the dream, so... I don't really have a lot to add outside of what everyone has said.
Are you afraid of heights?
No, I'm all right with heights. If you combine heights with like speeds, like a roller coaster, I'm not a fan of. Just standing on a bridge, no big deal. Like I was saying, I don't really have a lot to add outside of what these guys said. But I think the beauty of our shift anyway is that we're so close in age and experience is that it just draws us together more and we're able to rely on each other and lean on each other just because of that bond that we have. just because of that bond that we have, just because we all started very similar stages of our careers. And we're just kind of going through this journey together. So it's easy to lean on one of these guys if you need anything. And, you know, one team, one dream, you know, I trust these guys with my life. So just, just an honor to continue to work with them and just love this shift, so.
How long have you been on this police journey?
Three and a half years now.
Wow. Isn't that something?
Yeah, time flies.
Indeed it does. Any comments, questions from the deists?
How do you stop the trains? I think if you were on that trestle, I think you'd want to know if there was a train coming or not. How quickly can you get freight to haul, to hold up and give you an opportunity to do what you're trained to do?
So we're putting our trust in others in that situation. We're letting dispatch know, "Hey, can you let Metro know to stop the trains because we're up here?" And at that point, you're just operating on faith that they were able to get through to someone and they're, and we'll go from there. And, you know, we have a lot of eyes up there. We got flares, so we can see off in the distance. But again, you know, dispatch is great out here, TRICOM, they're very helpful. So I have all the faith in the world that they were able to do what they needed to do. And clearly they did because we're here today, so.
Thank you all for your service. It's appreciated and you're making a difference in the community.
Officer, we haven't heard from you yet. Now, you have two lifesaving awards.
Yes, I do.
And same question goes to you. You remember that earlier phrase where I said, "If you don't want to speak, you don't have to"?
Yeah, I didn't think it was gonna happen.
How long have you been an officer?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months? Geneva's a safe community?
It's one of the safest around, yeah.
Is this, is both of your experiences something you imagined would likely happen? Or?
I always pictured it happening. I kind of pictured this is where I'd be at in my life, what I wanted to do. So I'm glad I was able to make that happen and I'm very happy with where I am right now, yeah.
Well, we're very happy, too. Do you have family and friends here tonight, too?
I have my parents and my girlfriend, yes.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you. So what's your message to the community when we look at all these young officers and young sergeant? And we all, and we all say this amongst ourselves, like, "Oh, my God, everyone's so young." Yet here you are transforming people's lives by saving their lives.
Well, a lot of us are gonna be here for the next 25-plus years, so, you know, if you're gonna be calling, you're gonna be seeing us around a lot more and there's gonna be, we're gonna be at most of the calls, so we'll be there 48 if you need you, so.
When's your next shift?
I'm off Monday, Tuesday, so Wednesday.
Oh, you got plenty of time. And what are you doing after the meeting tonight?
Probably going to dinner.
Are you?
Yeah, hungry.
Would you object if we took a photo of all you? You could stand up here?
No.
That'd be great. Actually, Jerde, do you have a camera? That is a good picture. Don't wait. I don't know my password. I love Passarelli. There we go. Now, the officer is heading out tonight to celebrate, perhaps have a nice dinner with family and friends. I just received a text from Fire Chief Antonori. It's on them. Charge the fire department. Item C, ladies and gentlemen. Our friends on the International Cultural Exchange Commission would like to welcome and recognize Geneva High School International Exchange students. And we have a spokesperson tonight, right? Floor is yours, Madam Albright.
Thank you, Mayor Burns and City Council, for welcoming us here this evening. I am relieved to tell you this has a lot less drama than the last presentation. So I am pleased and honored to be here this evening as we, our International Cultural Exchange Committee, ICEC, brings to you, to introduce to you, five students who are going to be spending the next academic year here in Geneva. They arrived about a month ago. We have students from five countries, from, in no given order, from Germany, Costa Rica, Portugal, Kosovo, and Israel. And we are, we are so pleased to welcome them and to have you spend the time. Most of you came early to meet them as well. These are AFS exchange students. And the Geneva High School has been involved with the AFS program for about 30 years. And typically, each year, there are four to six, seven students that come to live in Geneva from all countries in the world. I think it speaks very highly of our town, of our public school system and the Geneva High School to have so many families involved. They open their homes, their hearts, they share their daily lives, invite them to other family activities. And we're all enriched when we learn about each other and can share each other's life stories and family traditions and to learn about each other's countries, histories, customs, et cetera. In keeping with our ICEC mission statement, one of our, our mission statement is connecting cultures here and abroad. One of our board members, Denise Snyder, who could not be here this evening, suggested that maybe we should have, take this opportunity to introduce these exchange students to the city council. And they are with us here this evening. So may I present to you these five students. Can you please stand up? Mayor, Mayor, would you like them to come forward?
First. Anna, correct?
Anna, yes. And Jerri- Jerriel. Okay, Carl is from Germany.
Now, Jerriel, your friends just call you G.
Yeah, I go by G.
Okay, G sounds good.
This is easier.
And Orges is from Kosovo and Miriam is from Israel.
Carl, I gotta ask you a question.
Okay.
You knocked.
Yeah, that's right.
Knocked a wonderful man. He brought up on you in the newspaper playing soccer for the varsity squad.
Oh, yeah.
Pretty cool article about you playing varsity soccer.
Yeah.
Lots of press. That's cool.
Yeah.
All your friends say that you're a great guy, a good athlete.
Yeah.
And you quote, "Just fit right in." What's it like?
Um, yeah, it's really fun. It's really fun to play with the teammates and the team and, yeah. It's really fun.
Do they play soccer in Germany?
Yeah, of course.
I'm not really certain about that.
Yeah.
And you're a senior.
Yeah.
You're gonna spend the entire academic year with us.
Only the first semester.
Oh, you're only the first, so you head out after New Year's?
Yeah.
So, and then you finish, I think they call it gymnasium, right, in Germany?
Yeah, that's right.
So you finish gymnasium in Germany?
Yeah.
And then what?
So when I come back to Germany, I have still two and a half more years in school. We have 13 years in our school.
Really? Thirteen, so you have, so you're really not a senior?
Thirteen years, yeah.
You're a senior here?
Yeah, I'm only a senior here.
Wow. And what city do you hail from? What city do you live in in Germany?
In Munich.
Munich?
Yeah.
Not familiar. It's a beautiful city.
Oh, yeah, I like Munich.
It's a big city.
Yeah, not that big like Chicago or New York, but.
But lots of culture, lots of art?
Oh, yeah, the Oktoberfest culture.
How old are you, Carl?
What, what did he say? Oh, yeah.
Well, this'll go over well with it. Have you been to Chicago yet?
Yeah, one time.
And your impressions were?
Very cool. I like big cities and Chicago is one of the big cities with the big skyscrapers and, yeah, very impressive.
Geneva reminds me a lot of New York City. Do you feel the same way?
Oh, yeah.
And what do you want to do after your career in education? Do you want to engineer, doctor, lawyer?
Probably something with sports, but I don't know, I have two and a half years.
Plenty of time.
Yeah.
That's cool. Well, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. It's nice to be here.
Anna? Now, Anna, remind us all your home country?
Portugal. I'm from Portugal.
What city in Portugal?
Lisbon.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, born and raised in Lisbon.
Born and raised in Lisbon. And how, your family back in Lisbon includes whom?
My mom, my dad, and my twin sister.
Your twin sister?
Yes.
Are you the older of the two?
We don't know. We don't know. They never told us.
Well, let's make a call, clerk.
They thought someone would take the power, but I already did, so I don't know what's an issue anymore.
They didn't tell you because why?
They thought one of us would take the power, but I already did, so, I mean, it's time.
Well, you seem to be very shy, so it's like, wow. Anna was explaining earlier, she has my brother Brian as an English teacher, but Mr. Burns called in sick today allegedly.
Yeah.
And you were all concerned about.
And gave us a quiz anyway.
Pardon me?
And gave us a quiz anyway.
Gave you a quiz anyways?
No, it was not fun.
No, well, we will revoke his tenureship immediately.
Thank you for your service.
So what else do you like to do besides study and have fun with friends and all that good stuff?
Well, I play softball in Lisbon.
What position?
Uh, shortstop and second base.
No kidding?
Yes.
So you're gonna be on the team?
If they want me.
Who's the head coach still?
I don't know.
It's not Dirks, is it? No, he retired.
It's a lady, if that helps.
That does help. So, strong arm?
Yeah.
And are you a lefty or righty?
I am a righty.
So what's your batting average?
I don't know. Never measured.
There's not a whole hell of a lot you know, is there, about in terms of like who's oldest, what's your batting average?
I mean, we don't have, softball is not a big sport in.
Oh, it's not?
Portugal, yeah. We only have nine teams now. And my team, well, we now have a national team that I'm supposed to be part of, but I'm here, so.
Oh, wait, wait, hold on. You are gonna likely be part of the Portuguese national team?
Yeah.
That's not, nothing. That's pretty cool. As shortstop or second base?
Uh, shortstop.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
Thank you.
So. Did the high school bring ringers in here? No, clearly. I didn't know we could recruit. So it's not, it's not unrealistic to say, as a member of the national team, there could be an Olympics in your horizon.
Probably not. We're gonna be honest, not my, I don't think so.
Did your family ever tell you about the Olympics? Do they?
Yes.
They only told your older sister.
Or younger, who knows?
So looking forward to the dance this week?
I am.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun. First, first homecoming dancer?
Yes, we don't have homecoming in Europe in general.
In general?
I have been to a kind of prom, but it's European style, not as good as American style.
Okay, what is a European-style prom?
It's only for seniors and there's like teachers everywhere, like more teachers than students, actually.
Sounds miserable.
The after-party is good, though.
They what?
The after-party is good.
There's no teachers at the after-party? Did you hear the people in the back laughing? Wow. Well, we're delighted you're spending your year with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great homecoming week, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, who wants to go next? G, come on up, man. Our buddy G is from beautiful Costa Rica.
From Costa Rica, nice and born there.
What's the name of the city?
Limon, like lemon. Limon.
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 Are you the oldest in your family?
The oldest of my siblings and the tallest in my family.
Well, clearly.
Yeah.
Three is six-five?
Six-three.
Six-three. And you play soccer?
I do play soccer.
Yeah. Has, has the basketball coach reached out to you yet, asking to?
He has. But I've never played basketball, like, never, yeah.
I mean, what's so hard? Little ball?
Yeah.
Yeah, what the heck, man? So are you enjoying your stays thus far?
I do, yeah. It's awesome, amazing experience.
What's the most surprising thing for you?
What's a present thing?
Yeah, what do you find to be most like, "Oh, I had no idea"?
The support that the high school and, let's say, the state gives to the education. Like, I went to, I, I took like digital photography as a class and they gave me a digital camera. All my classmates from that, from that class has like a digital camera that has been given from, from the high school. So that's like, when I, when I saw that, I was like, "Wow, that's crazy." And they gave, they gave like a computer to all the students, so, yeah, that's, that kind of things. And the support that they give to the, to the, to the sports teams of the high school and things, yeah, that's, that's pretty awesome.
You know, when Alderman Kaven was in high school, they gave a Polaroid camera. He had to go. Yeah, you can explain later, that was. So what do you do for fun besides hang out with friends and all that good stuff? Or more importantly, what do you like to take pictures of?
I really like to take pictures of landscapes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, cars, some things like that.
Oh, yeah?
And in my little free time that I have in Costa Rica, I like to go to the gym and do some sports, maybe hang out with friends and things.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Well, again, we're happy as heck that you're here.
Happy to be here as well. Thank you.
Okay, who's, you get to choose, G. Who goes next?
My host brother, I guess.
Your host brother?
Yes.
Are you guys living together?
We're in the same house.
You are? Whose house is that? Oh, my.
My dear host mom.
That's exciting.
Yep.
And your home country is?
Kosovo.
Kosovo is an absolutely spectacular, beautiful country.
Thank you.
It's very pretty. How's life in Kosovo these days?
It's pretty nice. Everything's chill.
Everything's chill in Kosovo?
Yes.
And, and so what do you do for fun here?
I guess this was my first day of school today.
Wait, whoa, whoa, today was your first day of school?
Yeah.
Really?
Yep. So I still haven't been able to join any clubs or anything like that. I just came four days ago.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
What airline did you fly? Did you fly LOT? Fly LOT through Warsaw?
Yeah, yes, three, I changed three airplanes coming here.
All to come to Geneva?
Yep. It was a 16-hour flight without the waiting in airports, more than 24 hours with the waiting.
And you flew first class?
Nope.
Wow.
Yeah.
Did you have to Uber from O'Hare to Geneva or did someone pick you up?
No, thank God. Pick me up.
Oh, that's so cool.
Yeah.
So what club do you want to join? If any?
The art club, which is so not likely of me because I study engineering back home.
Oh, you do?
I'm in, I go to an engineering high school back home. And me taking art here is completely something else, but it's fun.
But that's what you should do, right?
Yeah.
But there's gotta be a lot of connection between art and engineering. I mean, is, is it this, it's allegedly the different side of the brain, but.
Maybe the constructing part, the drawing part does connect a little bit, yeah.
And when you're all done with school, what do you want to be professionally?
Professionally?
Travel agent?
That could work. That could work, too. Uh, well, um, I'm kind of all over the place. Uh, I do like engineering a lot, but also I do lo- like a lot of, uh, social studies and stuff like that. But I'll see. I ha- I have a year.
I'll see is the best response, isn't it?
Well, it's kind of, uh, it's maybe not the best answer, but, uh, I like to, I like to answer that way because, uh, it makes me feel more comfortable. I know that I have one more year of time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, welcome to Geneva.
Thank you, it's very nice here, I really love it.
I'm glad you love it. Okay, last but not least, our friend from Israel, welcome.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Took a selfie earlier, for God's sake.
Oh, yeah.
I've already got three likes and two people deleted my account. So tell us a little bit about yourself, where in Israel are you from?
Um, I'm from Magar Village, it's near to Nazareth.
It is?
Yeah.
And do you have family, siblings, brothers and sisters back home?
Oh, yeah, I have one sister and one brother. I'm the oldest one.
You are the oldest one. So this is an experience for your whole family?
Yeah.
Do you talk to your family every day?
Um, yeah.
Are they, are they interested in, well, of course they're interested, but are they, are they nervous for you? Are they excited for you? Are they both? Are they always checking in?
Both.
Both, yeah. And how long have you been here in Geneva?
Um, a month.
A month, wow. So you're finally getting settled in?
Yeah.
And homecoming week's pretty cool?
Yeah, it's really nice.
Yeah, it is fun. Now, is everyone going to the dance, too? Absolutely. And everyone, I know Carl likes the dance because Alderman Kilberg asked him. Are you a big dancer, Gee?
I guess.
You'll fit right in. What else are you involved in?
Um, the art club, the cheerleading.
You, I, are you in the cheer team?
In the choir, yeah, cheerleading.
You guys had some great Instagram posts.
Oh, I start this Friday. I will start this Friday.
Oh, okay, well, that's cool. You start on homecoming?
Yeah.
No kidding? Congratulations.
Thanks.
Wow, that's a big team, too. Holy. So besides all that fun stuff, what do you do to relax and?
Um, I dance and play piano.
You do? What type of dance?
Um, I used to dance ballet for seven years.
Wow.
And I danced salsa.
Salsa?
Yeah.
Really? Is there a lot of connection between ballet and salsa? Absolutely.
Not really.
It's like being an engineer in a notice for you, it's like.
I just love dancing.
Well, that's cool. And piano, how long have you played the piano?
Um, like, two years.
Oh, okay. Are you still taking piano while you're here, too?
No.
You're not?
I just play piano for the choir.
Ah.
In our school.
It's a very impressive choir.
Yeah.
Very good choir. And if anyone in the day has any comments or questions for our students, by all means, but, Mr. Kilberg?
Uh, all your English is, is excellent. Uh, tell us a little bit about how you mastered English. I mean, uh, I don't think any of us on the council can speak any of the languages that you're familiar with. Did you learn it in school? How, how do you, uh, how'd you secure, uh, your, your fluency?
All of us, by turn?
Just quickly, if you.
Um.
And we like, if you could answer that question in your native tongue.
We, we learn at school like English. From the third.
First grade.
Third grade, yeah.
First grade here, from first grade.
First grade?
Jeez.
Second grade.
Yeah, in my case, at least like they give you like the basis, and you like start mastering when you get here. You get like, start practicing, speaking and things.
But how do you immerse yourself to stay current with it? Because when you go home, you're probably speaking your native language. Do you speak both languages at home?
Um, in Costa Rica?
Yes.
No, only Spanish. Like, I, I used to like try to get involved in English, like, uh, consuming media in English, so I can like at least, uh, understand really well what, what, like the, the, the language. So I think that that's my plan, like, when I go back, back home, I will keep like trying to get involved in English. Thank you.
Very quickly, what's your favorite American TV show?
Friends.
C-Span, what?
Friends.
Fri- Friends?
Are you judging me?
No. I wasn't gonna say contemporary TV show.
Well, it was not that long ago.
It's true, for you, probably it was just like a blink of an eye, yeah. So Friends, Gee?
I actually don't consume that much TV, so I can't answer that one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I've never seen a.
Do any of your host parents have television?
They do.
Can I do two?
Of course you can.
The Hundred or How to Get Away with Murder, or not?
That, that's, that, that, How to Get Away with Murder is a fascinating show, isn't it?
Yes.
What, are you on season one?
I finished all.
You binged it in four days?
Uh, no, back home.
Oh, okay, so, okay, got it. Yeah, just on the plane from.
Maybe.
No.
I have no idea.
No idea. Svengoolie on W. Anything else? Anyone from ICEC wish to say anything? This is so cool. And we'll see all of you at the football game on Friday night? I know tonight's the Powderpuff game, so you ought to get probably out of here and go have some fun. Now you know what all the police look like, so that's helpful. Can we get a photo? Is it okay?
Yes.
Mayors say we also have something for the students, too, and I wanted to just thank Cynthia, yep, we're li- we're live.
Okay.
I wanted to thank Cynthia and her team, just for all the work to put this together. And not only are they helping showcase Geneva to our students, they're gonna be immersed with us for months, but in. Cynthia, if you want to just pop up with the microphone and say in the week's end, you'll also be welcoming a delegation from France, is that, is that right?
Yes, uh, two weeks from, well, less than two weeks from now, on September thirtieth, we will have some visitors again from Croisi. This time, a small group, but it's been four years since our friends from France have been here, so they're looking forward to it. We have four people, we are slow in getting every information out and getting all of this together, but soon your mailboxes will be flooded with information from us. So I hope that you can participate with that, and Genovans out there as well.
The, the French teacher from Geneva High School married a classmate of mine, they met in France while he was there working for Burgess Norton. They now live in, oh, God, don't quote me, I want to say. Is it Wasco?
Wow.
So I wanted to invite them, because of course, fascinating, fascinating, yeah. Life is good.
Life is good, indeed.
I said it was a hundred bucks a person.
Pardon?
What?
I, I want to thank Ben as well for helping coordinate from your side, and, and all of you city council members. And I think a special, uh, thank should go to the parents who are.
Absolutely.
Parents and siblings of these wonderful young people, can you?
Yay.
So we thank you, and.
And we've got some certificates. It's, it's, uh, good for dinner at the Little Owl, so you guys are gonna enjoy this restaurant very much. Better than, sorry, thanks.
Right.
Fifty percent off at the Little Owl.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Wave your mouse, Dan.
Yeah.
This on Geneva's website, on YouTube.
On YouTube as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you again, ICEC. Thank you, Cynthia. Item D, ladies and gentlemen, introduce Administrative Assistant Olivia Ramos and Street Maintenance Worker Melvin Shaw. Olivia, come on up. It should be noted that Olivia and Melvin and their guests were hanging out in the kitchen. We actually heard you guys guffaw at one point.
That's not true.
That's true, we heard it, didn't we? We did. We heard it. Okay, Olivia. I work at Public Works Department as the Streets Engineering Administrative Assistant. Busy times.
Yes.
We're doing lots of work on the streets and everything else.
Lot of tree trimming, too.
Lot of tree trimming. Do you get all the fun calls?
I do.
You also work part-time for the city of Wheaton in the records department, police records department.
Yes.
Cause I know this sounds cliche, but I was actually heading to the mulch pile, and I saw you leaving.
You did?
And you were heading, I go to the mulch pile every day, and you were, and you were leaving on your way to grab a bite to eat prior to, quote, your second job.
Yes.
In fact, I think you stopped and said, do you remember what you said?
Can I help you on something?
Can I help you, sir? Just getting mulch.
Well, you looked like you needed help, so I stopped in reverse.
Thank you for that. My spare time, I enjoy spending time with my family and friends, and you, and.
Yes.
Your family includes?
My mom, my dad, my brother, and sisters.
Awesome. How many, how many kids in the family?
We're, I'm one of five.
Whoa, are you the oldest?
Middle.
Middle, middle's good.
I know.
Middle's good. Trouble, but good.
No, special.
Special, there you go. Special, let me put this down, got it. How long you been on board?
Um, tomorrow will be three months.
Oh, my gosh. So you're a veteran?
I feel like I am at this point.
And you have the pleasure of working with, make sure I pronounce his name, is it Linders? Oh, Nate Landers, I'm sorry, yes. And how's that?
It's fun.
You're being televised, how?
It's great.
It's great. It's, uh, how did you come to Geneva? How did you find Geneva?
Was just going through different like municipalities.
Is that right?
And I live in West Chicago, so.
Yeah.
Surrounding.
Oh, you have a good friend with you tonight?
I do.
Do you want to introduce your friend? Tristi, right?
Yeah, it's my friend Tristi.
These two young ladies went to West Chicago High School together.
We did.
Grade school as well?
Uh, middle school.
Middle school.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe you mentioned to me that your neighbor is the brother?
Yes, of our mayor.
Of Mayor Paneda?
Yes.
Very cool. So do you get your streets cleaned first?
No, but I just found out that that's the brother like three months ago, and he's been living there for like eight years, never knew it.
So you don't get out of your house much, is what you're saying?
I get out of my house. They just, you know.
Understand.
Keep to themselves.
What do you like best about municipal work?
Um, different every day.
Yeah, it really is. It really is. And of course, you have, now that the seasons are changing.
I know.
That'll be interesting.
It will.
You know, we have not had a snowfall in Geneva in thirteen years.
I hope that is the case this year.
That's why Nate looks so good. Yeah, yeah, except for, he got the hail last night, wasn't that something? Oof. What else should we know about you, Olivia? Or you, what, what more would you like to share?
All I do is work, so really not much going on here.
And you got the night off tonight from the records position?
I will be there tomorrow and Wednesday and Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, my God. Well, we thank you for spending part of your time with us, and we're delighted you're on board.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you very much, of course. Mr. Shaw. Now, Kilberg's gonna jump on this one, I know he is, because he's a, Kilberg's a, I know you will, because I already asked the question, Dean, so. Mr. Shaw, this is, this is Mr. Shaw's, this was prepared, you said, by your wife. And so it's here, bullet point, number one, wife. Your wife's name is Michelle.
Yeah.
You've been married nineteen years. You met at a New Year's Eve party.
Yeah. A friend of mine invited me, she was actually having it, but we didn't start dating at that time, but we met at that time, but we was. This got kind of close at the party and.
That's all you need to say, really.
Yeah.
Two kids?
Yeah. I have a twenty-seven-year-old, uh, he's a arborist, he stays in Georgia.
Really?
I got a twenty-year-old dau- daughter who go to Northern, she's a music education and vocal performance major.
No kidding? Is she a soprano?
Yeah. She sings opera, jazz, and classical.
Wow.
Yeah.
Does she hope to go tour?
She wants to, she wants to travel.
I bet she does.
I'm scared to let her do it, but.
One of the great opera houses is up in, I believe it's Woodstock, right? Doesn't Woodstock have a great opera house? Woodstock, Illinois.
Oh, okay.
Beautiful, spectacular, historic structure.
She want to go to someplace in Australia and.
Yeah, I wouldn't go to Woodstock necessarily, but yeah, yeah, I know what you mean, yeah. Oh, God, yes, that's awesome. Now, you're, you're being very elusive here. I grew up in the area, but I know you're a West Aurora Blackhawk.
Yeah.
And you played basketball for them.
Yeah.
Now, of course, my question was, who did you play under? Remember the great basketball coach from West Aurora? Cause he graduated in ninety-two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, you called yourself a small forward.
Yeah, those guys bigger than me, to be honest with you.
Were you this tall in high school?
Pretty much, yeah.
No kidding? And then you told me you blew your knees out.
Yeah.
How did that happen?
Just, um.
At the New Year's Eve party, or?
I wish, wish, I probably went to, went to the league or something. But, uh, no, just on a, just fluke play.
Really?
I stepped on somebody's foot and, as I was turning, and twisted my knee. Foot stayed there, the knee went the other way.
Street maintenance worker.
Yeah.
That's an important gig.
Yeah, lot of work.
How long you been on board?
Uh, actually, two months. It was two months yesterday.
So you've seen all the heat?
Yeah.
What time do you kick off in the morning?
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
And everyone who drives by every time you're working, they're always, hey, good to see you.
Yeah, people speak really friendly.
All pleasant?
Yeah.
Not get the heck off the road, I'm trying to get to work?
Nah, you know, some people, we be in a rush, I, I get it. It's a lot different from what I used to do, so.
Yeah, because previously you worked for Old Dominion Freight Lines.
Yeah, trouble semi.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Long haul?
It depends, like, cause the hour, I start at eleven o'clock in the afternoon, well, in the morning, basically. But if it snows or bad weather, the line haul guys can't go out, so when we come in, we have to do it.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah. So we gotta hook up these double pups and dry doubles.
Ugh, wow.
And I was telling my terminal manager, like, the roads are still bad, especially, you know, after, after it snows, you know, I was turning into a off-ramp. Back trailer was always almost in the ditch, I'm like, yeah, it was.
Not good?
Nah, not good. I rolled with the windows down because I was sweating.
Oh, I bet. Where are you currently working here in town? What, what do you, what does Nate have you doing?
Um, different stuff, um, asphalt, trees.
Lots of trees.
Yeah, yeah, lots of trees. And, um... Doing, um, digging up stumps that we take down and stuff like that. Seeding and dirt and seeding and stuff.
Not a lot of major damage from last night, right?
Nah. We had one large branch we had to take, pick up today, so...
Is that right? Was that on Koserog's house? Might have been. Brad lives in his car. It was awkward to get out when that branch fell. We're delighted you're with us. What else would you like to share?
Um, hmm.
Because I think you were working on James Street about three weeks ago.
Yeah, I, yeah, I talked to you, you stopped and talked to me.
I said hello and I think you said, you pulled the Olivia, may I help you, sir? Who were you with that day?
Oh god, who I was with? I wanna say, uh, Tim, Tim Prey.
Oh yeah, okay. So is he your, is he your veteran staff member while, while in the field?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. Good guy.
I've worked with him a lot.
Good guy.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, Melvin, for choosing Geneva.
Oh, one thing, I didn't, I didn't charge the police department for my lunch, so...
Oh yeah, no, you could charge Batavious Police Department.
Okay.
They're loaded down there, no pun intended, so... We're delighted that you chose Geneva.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you for being with us.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
And you know what? Don't even come in tomorrow till noon.
Okay.
Okay.
Let Nate know that.
Oh shoot, Nate's still here. Thank you, Melvin.
Nice meeting everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Landers. Oh my lord. Good team, Nate. Item E, folks, consider approval of special event application from Chicago Race Management for the Ooh La La Chocolate One-Half Marathon 10K and 5K Run, November 6, 2022, with the use of public right-of-way and city services. Is there a motion to put this on the floor?
Bruno, so moves.
Motion by Marx. Seconded by Burghart. A summary by Mr. McCready.
Yes, I was gonna mention the item before you, the Ooh La La Chocolate Race is scheduled for Sunday, November 6. The race requires the, that several streets be closed and the application has been reviewed by all city departments. Would note that at the time the agenda developed, there were some outstanding concerns specifically related to the placement and timing and delivery of porta potties. No other city concerns or city staff concerns remain unaddressed at this time. And I would just note, um, joining us this evening, we do have Economic Development Director Kathleen Timoshenko here with us, as well as I believe, um, some of the other stakeholders in the audience.
Fantastic. Are there any additional comments, Kathleen, you want to present? Otherwise I'll entertain comments from the dais.
Hi, just to reiterate, um, what Ben outlined, you know, we, we try to work to balance, um, stakeholder concerns. There's always aches and pains during events and, um, usually we are able to resolve things at our level and they don't elevate to the city council. But in this case, um, we were unable to do that, so there's, um, there's some concern about the placement of the porta potties, um, it's probably about a row of 20 of them. They'll be placed on Campbell, starting at third, uh, going westward. And we've had, um, in the past, people have brought this up to us before, that the, the, the way that the event is, um, scheduled, the porta potties are pretty much out there for the entire weekend and that's, that's been concerning to some of the merchants from an image issue and they asked for them to be moved and we did, um, bring that up. And we thought that we had, uh, the issue resolved because the, uh, application came in with, uh, a location on the map that was not in that same area. So we thought it was resolved, but then later we learned that it was, uh, reviewed in error and that, the event organizer who's here, uh, Mary Agnes, has some reasons for it and she's talked to us about the logistics of her event and, and how they need to be there, so we, we did not really, uh, feel that it was, you know, a call that we could make and we thought maybe the stakeholders could talk about that with, uh, city council tonight and then the city council can determine how to progress. Thank you.
Who would like to speak first? Ms. Zilmer or Deb?
I'm not used to speaking in front of a lot of people, so I'm a little nervous.
Well, thanks for your patience tonight as well, thank you.
That's fine, it was really nice to see all that. Uh, I'm Sue Hadley. I'm here with my sister Deb Hilton. We're from Country Naturals, we're a shop in Geneva on Campbell Street, 316 Campbell Street. And we apologize to, to your council here that this problem was not resolved before we had to address it to you about the placement of the porta potties. We believe in the Ooh La La Race and it's a wonderful cause and the money raised will help many families in the time of need and our goal is to keep it that way. The city was told, um, by the director that we approved this location, we did not approve this location. Uh, we all agree that porta potties are necessary, but they can be placed in a more discreet location. Chicago marathons are two blocks away from the finish line. With all other events in town, including Swedish Days, which brings thousands of people, hundreds of thousands of people, porta potties are placed away from the center of town beyond Fourth Street. Jane Pabon Boutique is, is, is not happy with this. Haven Interiors, another shop on our street, uh, is not happy with this. We are not happy with this, we've... are against 20 porta potties across on, on Campbell Street, across from our shops. Weekends of, for the fourth quarter are very crucial to our five businesses on, on this street. This will eliminate many parking spaces and in the past, they were delivered on Saturday, picked up on Monday. They are not here for just the duration of the, of the race that morning. Uh, they are locked on Saturday all day. We get people come into the shop wondering why they're locked. Some of them were pretty upset, negative comments about that. Our street has had these porta potties for many years due to this race. We feel that there can be a better location, maybe in back of the courthouse or on another side street that's closer to, uh, the All Chocolate Kitchen. We at Country Naturals have been here for 30 years. We placed a big investment in our building and our courtyard in front of our, our shop. We'd like to keep the character of Geneva and we are very grateful to be a part of this town. We want to keep this picture-postcard feeling of Geneva and we feel that this is not the right location. Thank you for your consideration and for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zilmer.
Hello. Um, I agree completely on porta potties with Deb and Sue from Country Naturals. They're kinda crappy looking, but there's really not much, they are necessary evil. And like all of our events, some of us win on some events, some of us don't. But in the end, everybody really comes out even. In our event, unlike the Chicago Marathon, unfortunately, we don't have 40,000 runners, which would be really nice. And so our race village, when I talked to Deb and Sue in the summertime, early, I said, if I could move them, I will definitely move them. And we talked to Winston Rathmussen, who is our course director, and we went out and we measured and we looked, where could we place them that they're in a line of sight to the starting line and convenient for the runners? These are half marathon runners and unlike a decade ago, it's not a goal to do one time. This is what they do every weekend. So to make our race village as convenient as possible for them is really important. We looked at in front of All Chocolate Kitchen. But unfortunately, the parkway is very short and the sidewalk butts upright against the building. Across the street, on the south side, same thing. Short parkway, sidewalk, building. We looked at moving them to the east side of Campbell. But again, there are bike racks on the north side parkway and then there's very little, uh, space. We looked on the other side where Cantini is. We have electrical boxes, we have an electric pole, there is guide wires, there is no room at all. Now, the suggestion was made to have them a block away. The problem is line of sight. With half marathoners, there are pacers and they have to get into their corral. We have grown this race from 300 people to over 1,500 runners. We take up, last year we had 70 runners from out of town who stayed in local hotels. We have moved Packet Pickup to the American Legion Hall so that we can have events on Saturday afternoon for our runners who are coming in out of town to have different chocolate experiences on Saturday and to bring all the runners to downtown Geneva for not only Sunday's race, but for Saturday as well. At no cost to the city, at no cost to the merchants. We send out a mass email to the 1,500 runners telling them where to have breakfast. We actually link them to the Chambers site, where to eat. All of these things benefiting the city, the merchants, and again, no cost to anyone but us. We tried to negotiate with Country Naturals and say, great, we will have the porta potties in a late delivery on Saturday to avoid them being out there and then that is an extra fee and we will pay an extra fee for service sanitation to come out and pick them up as soon as they can after the race. They said, well, you're not giving us a guarantee of the time. And I can't do that because the porta potty company doesn't schedule until the week of the event. So as soon as I know, I can let people know and we have paid for that. We also have to pay our employee on Saturday to be there to lock the porta potties because we have had experiences where, um, people have gone in and done some pretty disgusting things in there. In addition, to help the merchants, we will have signage on the porta potties, which say, um, these are for a private event, we apologize for any inconvenience. If you have questions, please call this number, which will be our office number, so that we can take all the complaints. This event not only raises awareness of Geneva, we have people, we do extensive marketing in the surrounding states. And as a result, we have so many runners coming back from last year that attended to get a personal best. To have the porta potties not in the line of sight would be very difficult for them and they would look at our race village and, and complain, why would you move those? It's a function of the event for them. Next year's plan is we're incorporating more of the merchants who do chocolate and do candy and ice cream and extend the event to Saturday with a children's race. I don't like the porta potties any more than anyone else, but the lines are sometimes 13 deep, 20 deep, waiting to go before they get in their corral. If they miss their corral, then they miss their pacer and they're off and they're not gonna come back. And they're not kind when they're a small group, they talk to one another, they'll say, that race village, they move the porta potties, what a stupid idea. They're very serious about what they do, they're elite athletes. And to move this because they're ugly doesn't help anyone and I've really tried to compromise and, at a cost to us. It also raises funds for St. Jude's. Not only does our family give a grant to St. Jude for research from this event, but our participates donate directly, which allows St. Jude to use that money for the siblings of the kids receiving treatment for special things for them, since they are stuck in Memphis as well. We all gain and we all lose with all the events. Myself included, I live on Sixth Street. People park across my driveway at Christmas Walk. Why complain? We have the benefit of getting to live in Geneva. People throw garbage on our lawns, we asked for trash receptacles, we got them. You just pick up the trash. I don't ever want to be the worst part of anyone's day. And if I could change it and it would not really hurt my event, I would absolutely do it for Deb and Sue. But it just won't work for the event. They will be there less than 27 hours. We have really tried to, to compromise and work to benefit the merchants and I'm sorry we couldn't come to an agreement. Do you have any questions?
Anyone from the dais, uh, Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. So... So at this point in time, what is the scheduled delivery time? You had mentioned that you offered to have them...
We have asked for, um, the porta potty company to come as late in the day as possible.
Okay, so that's the current status?
And then to pick up as soon as they can after 10 a.m.
Okay.
And fortunately, we have truckloads of them. So it's not as if they have to go on another delivery and it will be delayed. But with trucking, part of the problem is there aren't enough employees and so they will do their best.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else on the dais? Yeah, a question for either Mrs. Zilmer or Sue or Deb. If you want to, come up to the microphone. Uh, we want, we have to make sure we capture it though, for the record, but perhaps, not, not that, yeah, perhaps?
I just, I just feel that, um, if something else could be possibly worked up, we just don't want it in the center of our town on a busy weekend in November, for all these shoppers coming. Our town is a beautiful town. The porta potties are an eyesore and they're always on our street, always. Can, can it go in the, in the front of the courthouse and back of the porta potty?
Well, that would be an option, but it's not in the line of sight of the starting and it's a long way to walk for them.
Well, can that information be told to the runners that the porta potties are in the...
Absolutely, but they don't have to come to Geneva. They have lots of choices. We compete with Emotives, um, Chocolate Race in Chicago. We are very fortunate, the situation in Chicago has allowed us to cap, captivate an audience that normally wouldn't come here, but once they get here, they love it. If we began to move the porta potties behind the courthouse, they have no line of sight of the starting line. If they're in line and they're, they've gotta get into their corral and they have to walk all the way from behind there, they're gonna miss their corral time and they're gonna not be able to pace. They won't come back.
The back of the courthouse is not even a block away from the line.
It doesn't matter.
One, one second ladies, I'm gonna, Mr. Landers, did you have your hand up? Okay, got it, okay, forgive me. Mr. Bruno, Mr. Koserog?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Mary Agnes.
Hey, Mike.
Well, not being a, uh, a runner, I'm, uh, I'm taking your word that the line of sight is really critical to the, uh, to the village, to the campus. Is, uh, there's the space next to the History Museum, I'm looking at Google Maps here, owned by the Unitarian Church. Is that involved in any way? I know that's not publicly...
Yes, there's a tent on there for, um, Packet Pickup, a warming, it'll be a warming tent, it'll be heated if it's a cold day, so that's already taken up. And the problem on grass, and that's another option, we thought about, what about the courthouse? You know, moving them up on the lawn. Moving them up's not a problem. Moving them down is a huge problem because of the topography. If they tip over, it's gonna be a real mess. So it's not getting them up there that's a problem. So we have, and Winston has looked at every option. We used to have Packet Pickup right on that side of the courthouse lawn, but with the, with the half marathon becoming more popular and the lines, we've had to move that to the Unitarian Church. And we need the Unitarian Church there because we get power from there and it's a... And we need the Unitarian Church there because we get power from there, and it's a walk-through. So people, if they're coming through and we're serving them, they walk through the tent and come out. You know, we could... I asked the city, can we put them on Third Street facing the courthouse, the doors? The only problem with that is, and you have to think about why we're using the Porta Potty... It's a little bit open to the public. It's not that private. I don't think that it would be something... I don't think it would be a good placement. They're going to butt up right against our timing, right against our sponsors, who, again, fund this event. So it's important that we put them in a place that's sort of off but still visible, and Winston went through it. We went out, we measured. I spent a lot of time. If I could come up with a better place, I would, but going behind the building is not an option. As Mike said, line of sight is really important to them.
Mr. Bruno, the floor is still yours.
Well, I'm empathetic to both sides here. You're taking power. It seems like the Unitarian Space Services, that you've got tents and warming there. In future races, can that be swapped? Can warming be over on the courthouse lawn and Porta Potties be in that? I don't know. I'm not going to try to design it here.
We tried that in 2018. The problem is the courthouse lawn is on a slant. It was very hard. Sometimes in November, if it's been wet, it got very muddy in there because it's... Everything was sliding down. It's not really... Again, it's not really an option. We've been doing this since 2014, and we finally have it where Race Village really, really works. Last year, Race Guides came out from California. They viewed our Race Village. They wrote up a great article about our event. It really is, unfortunately, I know it's not what people want, but it really is the setup that we need. And again, we have compromised. We have done everything. They will be there less than probably 28 hours. This will not impact very many people because they're coming late in the day and removed the stores. Many of them don't open until noon on Sunday, and we want them there at 10:00 a.m., so they may not even be there on Sunday morning. We book a lot of Porta Potties doing 24 events annually. So I think that we can really talk to them and help the merchants out by not having them there.
And this is just random thoughts that may not play into the planning for this event, but the aesthetic. I know there are trailered bathrooms, multi-stall units that... I don't know if you can get the quantity of stalls necessary and that type of thing, or I don't know if the cost is much higher, but as I said, I'm empathetic with both sides here. So I'm just...
Well, and I can tell you about those trailer toilets. We got a unit for an event in Lafayette, Indiana, the Subaru Challenge, which is a 24-hour bike race around the Subaru track. That was August 8th, and we had same company, a trailer. They're air-conditioned. They're... It's like walking into a regular bathroom. There are four stalls. The cost of that, and only because the company is located in Indiana, the cost to them for that trailer for four stalls was $2,900. That's really expensive. My cost, because I book, is... My cost for the... All of them won't be that. That would be cost prohibitive for us. And again, eat into the donation to St. Jude on my part.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Mary Agnes.
Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Kosarog, and then forgive me... Correct, Mr. Kosarog.
Hey, Mary Agnes.
Hey, Brad.
I was just wondering, have you guys looked at tenting them, like on Saturday? Can we put a tent on the outside?
Tenting what? The Porta Potties?
Porta Potties.
Well, that would mean... We would have to get pole tents first. So pole tents, and we would have... We could have, like, sides. The problem is then we would have to bring in either water barrels or concrete because there's not enough land to stake them, so they'd have to be weighted. So then we would have to have a forklift on the truck with the weights to bring them off. The cost of the tent... Now, we get a 20-by-30 tent on the Unitarian Church lot, and the cost of that tent, with my discount from our vendor, is about $2,000 with heat and electricity. So if we were to tent all of those, that would, again, be upwards in the thousands of dollars. And they will be there probably 26 hours, removed, request at 10:00 a.m., so they could be gone by noon by the time the shops open.
So the tent wouldn't need to be heated, though, or anything like that? This is just for aesthetics to cover it up?
No, but it's a pole tent, and because then it would have to be not eight feet. Pop-up tents only go to eight feet height. We'd have to have a pole tent so it could go to 10 feet to clear the top.
Okay. That was the only idea I had. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cavens, sir?
Thank you. You said that they're going to get delivered later on Saturday and hopefully be picked up before the shops open in the morning?
We're going... That is our request, 10:00 a.m.
Okay. I just know you keep saying, like, 26 hours, so that doesn't jog for me.
Well, okay.
Well, I mean, if they get dropped off later in the afternoon on Saturday and are picked up at 10 or 11 in the morning?
Right. Our goal is to have them dropped off between 3:00 and 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
All right? And picked up... The most, we're saying, is 26 to 28 hours if it doesn't work out. There, again, are no guarantees based on what if there is an accident and the truck is late. There are a lot of things that can happen, so I don't want... I can't give Deb and Sue a guarantee, and that's what they've asked me for. I can't do... I can't control the unit.
But it sounds like you're trying to make sure that they show up later in the afternoon and they're picked up earlier in the morning.
I have already requested it, and I can have service sanitation send you if that's what you would like, but I have already requested it because...
I believe you requested it.
Yeah. I have no reason not to. And again, we book a lot of Porta Potties annually. I am very hopeful that they will do their best for us.
And on Campbell Street where these are located, I'm looking at the map, are they on the...
Parkway.
Are they on the north side of Campbell or on the south side of Campbell?
The north side on the parkway so that the doors open to...
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk. And I do want to make reference to that. There are no parking spaces taken up because they're on the parkway.
They're on the parkway.
And it's very flat, so they don't rock, and it's a long stretch without any interruption. So there's no electric box. There's nothing in the way.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Just a quick query for everyone to consider, and certainly for Sue, who I think is spokesperson out of respect for Deb. Would the south side of James Street serve the same purpose in terms of view from the starting line and the flat surface uninterrupted from...
They are flat. There are trees on that parkway. The other problem is the only line of sight to see the starting line, and again, it's a whole block. And on that day, there are a lot of spectators. There are a lot of people right in front of the courthouse. So it is a block, and it's hard to get... You know, it would be hard to get down. The only line of sight would be from the first Porta Potty. When you would get to the second Porta Potty, you're not really going to be able to see... I mean, we could push it over, but only two would be able to see the line of sight. There's parking there, and so people walk. So the lines coming off of the Porta Potties lining up would interfere with all of that traffic down there. There's nothing going on on the south side of the courthouse, and I think that's why all the festivals do use it. And I can understand their position, but unlike any other festival, this is a very short period of time.
Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. Just trying to brainstorm here. So the lot right behind All Chocolate Kitchen, the Craft Urban parking lot, that's off limits to you?
Well, that's not up to me because Craft Urban is in there, and our toilets would take up quite a bit. There's not a lot of radius in there to turn. I think it would be a difficult delivery. Not that we couldn't do it. They could be moved into place, but the challenge becomes when they come back to pick them up, if there are people parking, they're hard to remove. We cone off Campbell so that the... We also have a barricade, you know, barricade company that comes and puts down the barricades, and we park our trailer on Campbell so that when we move... A lot of people are coming after church. They want to park. We can allow the Porta Potty Company to get right in there so that they have access to pick them up. And I will say, since 2014, we have been an excellent neighbor to the churches, to the merchants. We have gone above and beyond to accommodate the churches and work with them. There's always going to be complaints when people are... You know, we put up signs for the churches two weeks prior. We notify every car in the parking lot. We get up for the early services to make sure every person knows. We're not required to do that, but we do it because the churches are important and the pastors, you know, want people to come and want people to have ease of access. So we have looked at every option we could find, and unfortunately, the Race Village, the way it's set up, is the best for our runners, for the services that we use, and for the ease of access.
So speaking of the Unitarian Church, there's also, in between the church and Harvey's Tales, there's a small parking area. There are two actual parking spots marked for the church. Is there... Do you think there's any chance that you could put some Porta Potties on that section?
Again, no one would be able to see those. They're coming, they're parking throughout Geneva. It would be difficult to see. They are not going to be able to see the starting line.
Where's the starting line again? I thought it was at All Chocolate Kitchen.
No. It is on Third Street, a little bit between... South of the Geneva History Center, so right about there, a little bit farther up.
Okay, so that's right by the church? I mean, the church property extends to the History Museum?
No, no. It's farther up. It's farther south.
Okay.
On Third Street. So if they're tucked away behind... First off, we're not allowed to use those parking spaces, and they don't like us to be anywhere back there or store anything or anything, and that's part of our agreement with the Unitarian Church. So because they go in and out and park there. But if they were tucked back there, then they're not visible, and that, again, is a problem for the 1,500 runners who choose this event and choose to come to our town.
Actually, full disclosure, I actually work at the church, so I don't know what your options are, but I think that you may have more options there than what I'm hearing you say. So I just...
What do you mean?
Well, I think that it could be permissible that the Porta Potties could go on that spot. I mean, and you still aren't happy with that location for line of sight, I understand.
But then they're tucked away, and that's not the purpose of it. And how am I going to get a line of 13 people with a tent there? Where am I going to put 20 Porta Potties across and have 13 people line up?
And what about the lot behind the Patton House? You know, that... When you can walk from Third Street, there's...
Oh, they're out of sight, completely out of sight.
But they're going to be registering in a tent. They're going to know what...
They're already pre-registered. They're all pre... They're pre-registered.
Don't they pick up packages and packets?
Yeah, you said Packet Pickup was on our church property?
Well, and the after-party, the after, you know, coffee and things like that.
Okay, and is that set up for this year? I know it's been there in the past, but I don't have any knowledge of that for this year yet. Do you know? Is that secured already for this year?
I... That's not part of what I do, so I'd have to ask, but normally we use it and we have no problem.
Yeah, I was just curious.
That lot, again, is very small, and it's taking up parking spaces that people need to attend the event.
Right. I understand that. I just...
And again, they're out of sight. There is... There really isn't. There...
What about the... I don't know if this would help or not, but instead of a row of 20, doing a row of 10 and piggybacking them, is that...
Piggybacking them where?
Well, anywhere, just so... It would just be a different footprint for the Porta Potties. I just didn't know if that had been considered, if that was something that was on anybody's radar to look for.
Well, the problem becomes there's not a large enough space to line up. Now, if the city has no problem putting them on Campbell on the street, north, or excuse me, east on Campbell, we can line them up there, but I don't know how Chianti's is going to feel when they're dropped off late on a Saturday, when they open later in the day for dinner. They're taking up parking spaces, and Saturday night is a big night for restaurants.
Sure.
So again, if any suggestions, if we haven't thought about it, you know, I would definitely, you know, talk it through, but we have looked at everything. And I think that the Chamber also has, and that's why they're there. It's a space that really works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the dais? 20 Porta Potties. That's what we're talking about. All 20 need to be visible from the starting line.
It's best practice.
It's best practices.
Yes.
So if the starting line's in front of me, I need to see them in front of me, or can I see them?
They want to see them. Yeah, they want to see them, and they get very anxious when you're in line and there's five people in front of you, and you want to go as late as possible because otherwise you got to go. They get very anxious, and they're waiting. And even though they know what time it is, they want to make sure. They don't know how long it's going to take for the five and what business they're doing in there, the people ahead of them. And so it's not a far way to go to get into the corral. We already have 400, well, 398 runners as of today, this morning, and to... It's already out there. The map is out there. Race Village is out there. It was written up, like I said, from Run Raves, and it's just already set because it's been set that way since 2014, and it's a function of a race. A race is very different than a festival.
Sue or Deb, if you want to speak... Sue, do you want to speak on behalf of Deb? We want to make sure we pick up your comments since it is being broadcast.
Do there are at least people parking?
Unfortunately, I need the microphone, so yeah, thank you.
Are there people parking for the race? I have no idea.
They're allowed to park virtually anywhere.
Anywhere that there's public parking.
We encourage all folks to utilize, first and foremost, the parking garage because it's free access all weekend.
So, or if they're parking behind the courthouse property, that nobody is there that morning, could the Porta Potties be put on that, and then they could use the Porta Potties? And then the Porta Potties aren't... And then the porta potties aren't in the center of town, that is going to take away from our picturesque town here.
Well, that is an excellent question. The problem is, they don't go till right before. It's a long run and they want to go, if you know what I mean, before. And so, to have it back there, they're not going to go when they arrive. They arrive early, some of them, you know, do a warm-up. So, they're not going to, they might go once, but they're going to go again. And again, not being able to see it and being anxious, what if the, you know, all these people in front of me? I don't, I don't really know. I've not been in back of the courthouse to see who parks back there, to be honest. I don't know. But we have all of the-
I think if you're having all these people come, 400 or 500, they're not going to all fit on the streets or in that other parking garage. They're walking from that other parking garage, which is way down.
They park all over. They can park on State Street because no one's there that early in the morning. They, we give them the city map of all the parking garages. So, quite honestly, I don't really know. I'm not around, I'm, I'm right in Race Village and I'm at the American Legion and different places, so I really don't know. They pull up to the American Legion, they come out, gear check is in there. And, but they're, having them in back of the courthouse is really, it's not a best practice. And, you know, I, they are ugly. I, I couldn't agree more. And the business that's done in them is not pretty either. But-
And the festivals, it's always back towards the end of Fourth Street on the other side, so it's not right in the center.
But this isn't a festival and it's not, it's not the same thing. And most likely, they won't, they won't even affect anyone.
Equal distance to the starting line is either Campbell Street? Right of way, or James. That's equal distance, correct?
No, to the starting line, no. They're not-
It's slightly closer to Campbell because it's slightly south of the history museum.
It's south of the history museum. So, yeah, it's, you can see the whole side of the courthouse from the starting line.
Walking here, we stood in front of the history center and you could see it more visible if it's going towards James Street than Campbell Street.
Well, it's not at the history center. It's farther, what direction am I-
You told me it was at the history center.
Further south.
No, that's where we're, you know, where it starts.
Right.
But when you stand at where the corrals are, they're not on that side of the street. They're on the west side of Third. That's where the arches, that's where the starting corrals are. So, when you're on that side of the street, you can't really see down. You can see everything on Campbell, you can see where everyone is lining up to start because they all start at different times. And I'm not worried about the five cares. They, they're, none of them even drink water during the event. They're not the issue. It's the people. And remember, they're paying $105 right now and that price will be at its peak at $145 to run this race. That's a lot of money not to have Race Village as it should be and use best practices. From Kara and, you know, Winston Rathmussen, I know probably none of you know him, but he's been doing this a really long time. And we just, it's all we can do is to get them picked up early and not affect Deb and Sue and the other merchants.
Let me interrupt just for a moment respectfully. I'm, I'm going to ask the council a pointed question. Are you prepared to cast a vote on this matter? Or, or do you wish additional, Ms. Burghart?
I, I have sympathy for both sides here. Just Alderman Bruno said, I'm not a race expert. We're all trying to imagine this in our brain. I mean, I appreciate that Mary Agnes seems like she's going to take some extra steps this year with the locking of the porta potties, trying to get them dropped off as late as possible, picked up as early as possible. I think all of us have indicated, or a lot of us have indicated that we would like to see some other options looked at for next year to make sure there isn't some other way to do this or to give some relief. It seems like this street has kind of borne the, the brunt of that. And you know what? If they were a chocolate shop or a ice cream shop, maybe they'd say, hey, that's, that's great because, but their, their store maybe isn't benefiting as much from this race as some other stores. And like you said, all events, I mean, we, with Festival Divine getting moved, we had some complaints from some homes where they did not appreciate the, the music and the traffic and the noise. So, there's always winners and losers, but, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to vote tonight in favor of this, but we'll certainly be eager to hear how it goes if some of these changes make it a little more bearable for those tenants on Campbell and then hope that maybe next year there'll be some, more of a compromise that can be reached whether, and I understand your expert says that has, the way has to be, but it also, the events do have to, to, you know, live simpatico somewhat with, with our downtown.
Absolutely. And we have really tried to accommodate everyone.
And I can tell, I know, we, I know the churches, we've talked about that, the churches and, and certainly I've been out there and some of those where, some of the other events where we have streets closed and people get very angry if they can't get to their, their route in the morning. But to understand they're coming at it from their angle, yes, you know, Chianti's probably wouldn't want to be blocked on a Saturday night, but a lot of different, like, it seems like a lot of different interests at play. But like I said, I'm, I'm comfortable voting for this tonight, but we'll be eager to see, you know, what, what changes could be made. I know you're always looking to make it better and less of an impact and, but yet continuing to grow it. And it's quite an economic generator for our downtown at a, at a time of year, early November, that's, we can certainly use that. So, yeah, so thank you. I do appreciate the ladies from Country National to be in here. I know it's hard too to, it's hard to be, to stand up and say, well, this is, this doesn't work for us, you know? That's, that's hard to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, the floor is open. Ms. Mayor?
I, I think that if there's any economic reason that you're holding back from paying extra to service sanitation to ensure that they pick up on time and drop off on time, that it should be done. And if they don't do what you like, there's plenty of porta potty companies out there. So, I would encourage you that they can do, they can get there and drop off when you want them to and pick up.
I, I do agree with you, but given the current situation with drivers and truck drivers, it is, it has been difficult. Service sanitation is the leader in porta potties in the Midwest. We have used other companies, local companies, and not had as good a success. They're older models. But I have had a great relationship with service sanitation for the past 11 years and I'm very confident that if they can, they do give a window because if something does happen and anything can happen, they don't want people saying, you said 11 o'clock, you know, it's 11:30 and, you know, so they, they do do that. But they try very hard. They're an excellent company, they have an excellent reputation. And I'm, I'm very confident they will accommodate us as much in having been our vendor for many, many years.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor, but I think that it's very unfortunate that there's 20 lined up in a row and you can't spread it out to other locations, maybe have 10 there and 10 on, across the street. And that, I work in construction, I deal with Porta John's a lot. I think you can expect more from them and that I hope you do, so.
I, I absolutely will make that a point to them. The only problem, and I, and I agree with you, we could do that, but you know what will happen? The 10 that are there are going to be the ones with the biggest lines because it's like, you know-
There's signage too. I mean, it seems like we're running into a very, a brick wall here, so-
We're not.
We should just vote and move forward. But I think that it does impact these businesses and I'm sympathetic to that.
I am, I am as well. And that's why-
I hope that you can get it to a tighter window and then consider other options.
We will do our very best. Yes, we will do our very best and consider in the future having maybe just 10 there and 10 on James for the five cares.
That would be, there's, you can put up a sign, there's more over here, there, you know. I, I ran, I didn't run the race. I went to the race and intended to run one year. It's a great event.
It is.
But I, I have sympathy for these businesses-
I do as well.
-that need to do their, their thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the dais or remotely? Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion by Marx, a second by, good lord, Burghart. On item E, which is the special event, application recommendation. And everyone's clear that the recommendation is as stated? Okay? With that, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero absent, the motion has been approved.
Thank you.
Excuse me, eight, forgive me, I have erred and I shall now be burned. Never seen people jump on somebody except for the last night's Packers game, which I did not watch. Eight to one, folks, the motion has been passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and those items can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Mr. Swanson makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Caven. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total of bills for payment is $5,171,147.16.
Mayor Bruno moves that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet on the city website.
Even from the remote location, unidentified for security reasons, Alderman Bruno does a heck of a job. Is there a second to that eloquent motion? Second by Burghart. Chance for questions? Hearing none, seeing none? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, the bills have been approved for payment and will be paid by 2024. Item 12A, folks, approve resolution number 2022-87, rejecting snow removal project bid. Is there a motion to so move? Kocarog and Mayor, the first, or the motion Kocarog, the second, Mayor, Mr. McCready, sir.
The next item authorizes the city administrator to reject the proposal for snow removal. As stated in the agenda item, city staff has previously notified that the current contractor would no longer be providing snow removal services and a request for proposals was issued on August 16th. Despite previous interest the city's received, the city received one proposal. Based on feedback from previous bidders, staff recommends rejecting the proposal and re-advertising requests for proposals with adjusted bids specifications. And I believe we do have Director Babica and Superintendent Landers here to answer any questions or elaborate on this item.
Questions for the superintendent regarding this item, other than the questions and answers provided earlier in the Q and A, Mr. Kocarog, sir?
Just one simple question, what do we do now?
No, so we would like to, I would like to put it, change the bid specs a little bit and put it back out for bid. I actually had a phone call today from a, another contractor that did not submit a proposal that is interested in proposing or submitting a proposal. So, we do have some, some other interest in it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. So, that revised bid proposal would include some substantive change in our specifications, whether it's melt, you know, chemical applications or something that would lure more in?
Probably the biggest change would be a move from the two-inch trigger. So, right now, specification is written that they do not, they don't come in and remove any snow unless there's two inches of snowfall or more. Based on what I've, the feedback that I've received from multiple vendors there, that's not something they're interested in. They can use that piece of equipment anywhere else rather than sitting in a parking lot waiting for us to call. So, the biggest change would probably be the, moving it to a one-inch trigger. Still kind of up in the air as far as who would apply after treatment when the, when they're actually done removing the snow. But that is a potential change also, is just allowing them to put salt down.
Okay. And out of curiosity, what is the central official number that says it's, it's one inch? Do we go to the New York Times, like we do with the Dow Jones or something?
That, that is actually a great question. Most of it's based off a forecast. I do try to measure in a couple of different places depending on where I'm at at the time that I actually make the measure, whether it's PW parking lot or actually out on the street. But usually, you know, you get a prediction of, you know, three to four, I'm going to make that call and say, be ready to go. But if it's that one to two-inch range, we just kind of measure it in a couple of different spots and make a phone call late at night.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Sure.
Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. So, one inch of snow doesn't sound problematic. How, what's the, what's the gauge that you use to determine, you know, when we need to plow? I would think that cars, that traffic could easily navigate one inch of snow, but maybe not.
True, it's, it's more of a timing issue really for the amount of snow and how much snowfall we get. Obviously, we have a, an agreement obviously with the UP that they would like their lots cleared by 6:00 AM. So, it's really a timing issue more than, than anything, I would say, for that. Typically, we'll have a, somebody, I have one guy that can go through and kind of do just the drive lanes to keep those open. And then hopefully afterwards, we can get some guys through. Once we've cleared everything else off the streets, we can get some guys in there and clear the rest of the lots.
Is there a standard for our city vehicles that, that do the plowing? Is it, do we, is it two inches?
No, we come out this-
Like the second, there's-
Sometimes it feels like the second, but yes, with, when it starts snowing, we usually have a few vehicles out, so.
Right, well, and when we put the brine down, it seems like when the snow hits the pavement, it just melts.
It, it does help, absolutely.
Okay.
So, and we do try to brine the lots also as part of our program.
Yeah, you can definitely tell where the brine has been applied. So, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Again, this motion is to approve a resolution to allow the city administrator to reject the bid. So, an affirmative vote is to support that rejection and nay vote is to not support that rejection. Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready, please take the roll.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent in Italy, the resolution to reject the bid has been approved. We're a public comment, folks, in new businesses. Anyone joining us remotely, Mr. McCready?
No one online tonight.
Dramatic, it's so good. Anyone in the audience wish to add any new business questions, comments, anyone from the dais? Ms. Mayor?
With the storm last night, I was asked by neighbors if the city is going to be coming by to street clean or anything like that. In our neighborhood, there's quite a bit of debris on the streets at this point.
Good news for us, street sweeping is actually scheduled to start next week, so kind of benefits us a little bit, but it won't be till next week.
And leave pickup is not starting for quite a while yet, right?
End of October.
So the specific question was, should I sweep all this stuff into the street? And the answer is no, right?
Would say no.
Unless you live on Gray Street in St. Charles's, do know.
Push it all in the north.
Mr. Kilburg?
With the hail we had last night, I noticed that there was an influx of pickup trucks that do roofing and are soliciting the opportunity to get on your roof to check to see if there's damage. So I just, I guess alert residents that just be cautious and that, I don't know if the extent of the hail was to the point where we were gonna have damaged roofs, but you don't need to reveal who your insurance company is. And if you're not interested, you can invite them to leave. But again, just be cautious, and I know some of our more elderly residents might be, let's say, not victimized, but approached in a manner that might be a little bit overbearing. So with that, just a word of caution.
I received five calls today, so.
From Swanson, or? Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to our natural resources committee who conducted a cleanup of the Fox River on Saturday. It was part of the It's Our Fox River Day. Jay Womack did a fabulous job organizing it. There were over 75 volunteers that cleaned up north and south of River Park. And it was a wonderful event, and they do it every September, and just wanted to thank him for that and all the volunteers. Seeing the families out there was fantastic. So, thanks to everyone.
Anyone else on the dais, on anything? If not, we do have a committee of the whole meeting still. Alderperson Ruby will be chairing. Is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
So moved.
There's a motion by Caven. As fast as you could say Bob's your uncle, is there a second? Seconded by Marx. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Actually, I don't need a second, my apologies. We can do it just for the fun of it.
You can do a third if you want.
I was so thrilled, I just wanted to be yelled at again.
All right, good evening. My name is Becky Ruby, and I am chairing tonight's committee of the whole meeting. And I'm going for record time here. Let the record show that Alderman Maladra is absent. Everyone else is in attendance this evening. Let's see, so item one, do I have to read that one on the, okay, never mind. Item two on the agenda recommends suspending the rules to permit me, Councilmember Ruby, to chair this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Kocarog, seconded by Mayor. Okay, a voice vote of all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Any opposed? It carries. All right. Item three on the agenda, approve committee of the whole minutes from September 6, 2022. Okay, moved by Kilburg, seconded by Mayor. A voice vote of all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Item four on the agenda, items of business 4A, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with StanTech in the amount of $37,679 for a water and sewer rate study update. In a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Mayor, seconded by? Caven, and is there a description?
Oh, you betcha.
All right, thanks, Ben.
The first item of business on the agenda this evening is the water and sewer rate study update. Dave Hyder, believe, now with StanTech, has provided water and sewer rate studies since 2009, with the last update being 2015. City council approved rate adjustments based on the 2015 report with last adjustment implemented in 2020. With IEPA loans retiring and future loans on the horizon, the study would help with preparation of the 2024 and future budget years. Joining us this evening, I believe we have Superintendent Van Gescam to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Any questions from the dais? You guys ready to vote? Okay. A voice vote of all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 4B on the agenda, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a supplemental agreement from Stanley Consultants in an amount of $39,122 to the professional services agreement for design services for the Southeast Development Project for a revised project cost total not to exceed $621,532. Can I get a motion? Moved by Mayor, seconded by Marx. And do you have a little?
Yep.
Yes, the next items regard a professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants for the design of Southeast Development Project. Due to the long development period, costs associated with design services will exceed the original amount from the agreement that was previously approved in 2018. The supplemental agreement before you this evening will allow the city to complete the design and begin procurement for construction of electric infrastructure in this area. There were several questions to which staff has provided some responses that were posted to the internet later this afternoon. And then, of course, joining us this evening, we do have Superintendent Holton, as well as Director Babica.
All right, Alderman Swanson?
Thank you, Chairman. I asked a question about this because it's a, it seems to be the consulting agreement that just never gets done. And we've been revising it significantly about every three to four years. And in 2018, it was considered a not-to-exceed with specific time budgeted for particular categories of consultants coming up with the budgeted amount. And that was fine in 2018. And I understand that the project has been delayed and perhaps has been changed. What troubles me with this agreement before us today is that there is no, there is not a specific budget time allocation by the consultants similar to what they provided in 2018. And the $39,122 seems to be just pulled out of the air. And given this project seems to come back to us every couple years, if it comes back to us in two years, how are we going to determine if the overage at that point is acceptable or not, or appropriate? So I would prefer to see an analysis of what's been completed so far, what needs to be done, and perhaps what is being repeated because it's been taking so long. But without detail as to what that $39,000 entails, I can't support this. So I think we need more information so that we at least have a baseline for completing this project or reviewing it again in two years. So that's my take on what we're seeing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Alderman Mayor?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't research this very thoroughly, but because I thought it was pretty straightforward. What is it, they're doing civil design for us? Can one of you guys help me out here?
So there's gonna be probably a two-part answer to this question, some from me, and then some from the electrical superintendent. The city entered into a contract with Stanley Consulting to do the design work for the Southeast Industrial Park. And at the time we entered into the contract, the timeline that was being provided by the developer was in line with the contract. So we were, actually, it already developed specifications for the transformer. We'd actually already put the transformer out to bid. And we're in the process of putting things in line with the design to provide the civil drawing portion of the electric utility to the developer who is building out the remaining non-electrical infrastructure improvements. So they were building the roadway, they were building the water main, the sanitary, the storm, the sidewalks, the bike trails, the drainage. That was all on the developer's civil engineer. But due to the specialization of both the substation as well as the necessary components to bring power down from the Geneva Business Park on Avril, that's what Stanley Consultant did. And their project that they presented us back in 2018 was based off of 2018 numbers. We are basically in the same position we are now, through no fault of Stanley or through no fault of staff, because we are still working to go hand in hand and be conjoined with the developer. And that development has, and I also think through no fault of the developer, it's just with COVID and everything else that occurred, they haven't been as aggressive as the original schedule that they anticipated in 2018. Therefore, because all the prices from Stanley were based off of their 2018 overhead, and their contract does call for an escalator clause within the contract, neither staff nor Stanley, or I would dare say the developer, had any desire or intent to be fundamentally in the same place we were four years ago. So that is the deep background as to what Stanley was providing and how we got to where we are now. Stanley is seeking to update their overhead and their staffing costs. Everybody, even the cost of the city is fundamentally different than it was in 2018. Our overhead, our insurance, staffing, staffing levels, staffing experience. Everything has fundamentally changed over those last four years. So that is what Stanley is seeking to bring that contract from 2018 into their modern cost portfolio. So we can finish this project, hopefully as the developer now is bringing this project up to fruition.
This is for the, this is in a crossed, it's not south of 38, it's the development at Kautz and Geneva Drive?
No. This is south of 38.
So there is a developer already for that, for that area?
Staff is in, staff in the city have been continuing to work through with that developer of the Bork Farm as, for the extension of the roadway and infrastructure. And there's been a number of things that we have brought forth in front of the city council, such as the license with Union Pacific Railroad to bring utility crossings in, which I think was about four months ago. So momentum is starting to build, albeit at a glacier pace, but it is starting to build. And we are moving this project forward.
So has this project started at the 621, or at the previous rate, or has it not started at all yet? And this is just a full-on restart at a new not-to-exceed price?
This is the part two that I was referring to.
No, the $39,000 is in addition to the work that has been done previously. We've done about 1,100 hours worth of work so far on the project to get us where we are today. And it's just, it's the increase in costs from 2018. The project was supposed to be done in 2020. Here we are in 2022, still kind of in the same place we were in 2018. So to answer your question, no, we're not starting over from scratch. This is to continue on from where we are right now.
So what percent complete are you right now?
Um, that's a good question. We've done, we've done substation engineering, engineering on the transformer to the point we can bid that. The design of the feeders and circuits within the development as proposed by the developer. And also the design of the feeders outside to bring power from alternate sources. So a fair amount of work has been done, but there's, you know.
But there's more, and it's not today's price.
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, probably for Rich. You mentioned this is, it's not their fault, it's not our fault. So I understand that, but I'm just curious, this $39,000, is that 100% of the additional cost? Or have they picked up part of the tab, or are they giving it all to the city of Geneva?
When you say they, can you clarify that?
I guess I don't understand.
So we paid, we had a contract for, well, 621 minus 39, right?
Yeah, right.
That was the original contract, okay. So that contract was for this project to be completed, and now this project is costing an additional $39,000 due to the last two years of the world. So, so my question is, is $39,000, is, is that hitting, is that the total amount that's needed financially to make this project happen? Or is that Geneva's portion? You know, are they, is Geneva footing the whole bill for the difference, for the upcharge?
Yes.
Geneva, it's all 100% on Geneva? Okay, so is there any chance of conversation that we would maybe split that?
There may be some confusion in the sense that Stanley is a consultant for the city, not for the developer. So 100% of the contract with Stanley, including the change order that's being proposed tonight, is being encumbered by the electric utility.
Okay.
So it's the base contract plus the 39, which gets you to the net total of 621 tonight.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you for all the explanations. I'm not questioning the work that's to be provided. I guess the piece that I'm not seeing here, and I asked the same question for the next item on the agenda, and that's to support the $39,000 increase. And nothing has been provided, hours or new rates, to support that. And I think that would be appropriate for us to get an updated, here's where we are now, and here's the project going forward that's scheduled, hours, rate, total. And that, I think, they obviously had to do that to come up with this $39,122. And I think it should be shared with us, it should be part of the contract. And that's what I'm asking for. That's what makes me uncomfortable not seeing.
Okay, so the rates that we're gonna get charged are the same rates as for item, the third item, for the GPP and three and the Old Kirk Road. You could reference, you can reference that. Those are the rates we're gonna get charged. I did have conversations with the engineers today. It's my understanding that the total number of hours are not changing for the Southeast Development. I have asked them to provide us a breakout of, you know, which job classifications are doing so many hours and what the total is gonna be. How that is spread out compared to the work done is gonna be relatively difficult because in the intervening years, as this contract has gone on for ages and ages, Stanley has somewhat reorganized. And so what was a BC14 classification no longer exists anymore. That's split between different ones, different engineers, so on and so forth. So it's gonna be hard to get an apples and apples comparison as to who was doing what before versus who will be doing what moving forward. But I have asked them to provide that.
Okay. And who's doing what, that's not the important, the important piece is supporting the $39,122. And that's what I haven't seen, that's what would make me comfortable.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have asked for that information.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this?
I, oh, go ahead, Dean, you haven't talked.
Just a couple of questions. I would assume then that what you're saying then is for certain disciplines, as it relates to the project, we're seeing an increase then, let's say, from $120 an hour to $135 an hour. Is that part of it? Just the fact that their rates for their various disciplines within the consulting companies schedule have increased over four years, is that part of it?
It's my understanding that's the majority of it.
Oh, that's the majority of it?
Right.
And that's, that's shown, I guess you could go in and you could do a comparison between what we saw in 18 and now what we're seeing in 22, and that would probably cover a good portion of the $39,000. The other question was, I know that we discussed, and I think, did we move ahead with the purchase of the transformer? Because I know we talked about that three or four years ago, because of the long delays in getting this piece of equipment in place. Is that on? Is that on order yet, or it hasn't been ordered, or where does that stand? And are we accruing funds to pay for it because it's an expensive purchase?
We did not move forward with the purchase several years ago. Partly, that was due to delays, well, it was due to delays in the project. The main reason was the warranty on the transformer. The warranty starts once we take delivery, so we want to take delivery to the transformer pad, so we were able to utilize the warranty while the transformer's in service. And what we didn't want to do is order the transformer, we don't have the pad ready, it gets delivered to Public Works, and it sits there for three or four years before we put it in service, and we get a shorter warranty time. The specs, we worked this summer on updating the specifications to get it ready to go out to bid. We're now waiting for the state of Illinois to release the Build Back, or not the Build Back better, the Rebuilding Illinois Grant that we were awarded. Once that gets done, then we can move forward with purchasing of the transformer and some of the other long lead times.
And from the documentation that was provided, it still looks like we're still looking at probably the better part of two years to get that transformer. And once we order it, delivery could be as long as 24 months.
18 months to 24 months is what we're being told for lead times.
You know, I think we're working with the right company here. Stanley has a history, the company's been in existence for over 110 years. They were, played an instrumental part in the rural electrification of the Midwest. The company's been involved in the rebuilding of New Orleans following the hurricane. They were involved in the, in the war in Iraq, the first war in Iraq, they built two air bases over there. They also were involved in the construction of the Jane Adams Bridge over the Fox River at Elgin, $95 million project that they were awarded. So, I think we're certainly working with the right consultants here, and again, I think what we're looking at, about a 5% increase. I think Alderman Swanson raised some excellent points, but looking at the last four years, a 5% increase in these costs, I think, are probably reasonable. And again, documentation would certainly be helpful, though. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
So, when I do projects with ComEd, we're required to pay an engineering deposit. Does developer, do the developers here pay engineering deposits to cover some of these costs, or is that left hanging on us?
The city code does require an engineering deposit. That does cover the engineering services and consultant services, not covered by staff. But it doesn't include the stormwater review. That's through the county ordinance, that's a wholly different beastie. In this case, as part of the development process, and to be honest with you, this question probably could have been better answered by Kathleen, who was here previously. The approach to the Southeast Industrial Park with this developer that we're working with has gone through several iterations. From the initial concept was that the city was going to hire a consultant and design all the infrastructure, and then that was going to get paid back by the developer or through an escrow, and that happened for a good portion of the civil project. And then, probably about the halfway point, maybe a little bit less than halfway point, the decision was made to reverse course and let the developer finish it off because they felt they could do it at a reduced rate, at a cost-saving measure, which the city gladly handed them, the information that basically they had already paid for to finish that design work. And that's basically where the civil improvements have been for about the last, I would say, 18 to 24 months. And a lot of that has to do with COVID. Market volatility, a lot of other things. The developer has been cautious with moving forward with this project. So, the short answer is yes, per city code, but it's not as clean-cut, there's a lot of gray in there, too, because how the responsibilities for the infrastructure have shifted back and forth. But it has always been the same team, and we have been working hand in hand, staff hand with W B K as our consultants, with their consultants, and of course, their engineer is named Brian. And before Brian became the city engineer, we had Brian Schreiber, so we had that Brian, our Brian, and then the developer had a Brian and his team. So, when you're doing a Zoom call and someone says, hey, Brian, three voices, so, it was a little bit of a challenge. But the good news is, is that momentum is starting to build again on this project.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, so a voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I would prefer a roll call vote on this.
For a cow, okay. That's fine, we can do, we can do a roll call.
There seems to be a little bit of disagreement.
Sure. All right, Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Berghardt?
Nay.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Okay. So, passes six to three. All right, and item 4C on the agenda, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants for design services for Geneva Business Park Three Substation and Old Kirk Road feeder in an amount not to exceed $362,250.
Second.
Moved by Mayor, seconded by Kassarag. I'm sorry, gave Caven, the other K. Oh, man, what is it about this seat?
There's K's.
One of those K guys. And do you have more to add?
I just add that the electric division has identified capacity needs for the Geneva Business Park and the Kirk Road Fabian Parkway Corridor. To meet the electric energy and service needs of this area, the division will need to construct a new substation and feeder. Staff does not have the expertise to undertake the design of these projects and has chosen Stanley Consultants for design services. And again, joining us this evening, in our capacity crowd at the moment here, is Superintendent Holton and Director Babica to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions? Alderman Swanson?
For this one, I just wanted to comment that this one had a detailed budget with hours and rates, and that was what I was looking for, for the previous item. So, good job on this one, and I'm fine with it, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I think we can do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Great, and that brings us to public comment, new business. Does anyone have anything to share? How about our thousands online? How many people are waiting?
No one raising their hand.
No one. Oh, they're intimidated. Okay. All right, so I just need a motion to adjourn? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.